Trustee Hakes.
Present.
Trustee DeBelle.
Here.
Trustee Cisco Smith.
Absences.
Okay.
She looks better without my glasses. She looks better without my glasses, huh?
All right. I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
So it's been moved in second. Did you get that, those voices? Been moved. It's been moved Williamson Williamson and.
Hakes.
No, I'm just kidding. Hakes. So all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
About the minutes.
A question.
Sherry, did we, did you tell us at that meeting about the racial and ethnic distribution of staff as we had asked for in September? Did I just miss that? Because I didn't see it in the minutes either.
No, I said that I had shared that request with the committee and that they would work towards coming up with a way to do that. But I did not give any information about it.
You can't just get that from HR in terms of?
No, it's not. It's not collected.
Yeah.
Oh.
You know, I mean, we've had many years where you did not ask that question.
Sure.
On applications.
Well, it was against the law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for explaining.
And I remember saying it would probably be easier for us to just do it because we could do it internally.
Right.
For that reason. Were you going to say something? I'm sorry, Sherry? No? Oh, all right. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
All right. No, none opposed. Thank you. We will go to the invoices, please.
I move for approval for the invoices dated. Wait, I have to scratch that. Invoices dated October 27, 2020 through November 24 and open purchase orders as shown on the attached dated list.
I'll second.
Wait a minute, I have to tell you, November 24, 2020 are hereby approved for payment.
I'll second. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions?
Nope. Aye. In favor.
I have a question, but it, well, that's because of this. Because our invoices are so much lower. Are we losing that money that was budgeted or are we carrying it over?
Well, that would be a finance. We can talk.
Well, to answer your question, I mean, we're paying our bills as they come in. We're still, you know, early in the year. We just got an augmentation to our book budget. So our, and our, and I anticipate that by June 30, we will have spent all our money.
Okay, that wasn't, well, whatever. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I think we need to vote.
Concerns? I'm sorry, so we have.
Did we vote? I'm sorry. Did we vote?
You had a question, so we entertain the question. All right, so it's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was that?
Okay. I'm giving some kind of feedback here. All right, let's consider the rest of the financial report, please.
Thank you. So item 1C. We'll start with the department summary by program. As you can see, the four-month target is 33.3 and we're at 29. So we're really not too far off the track. The departments where you see, you know, large amounts of money, they're still, you know, within, at 22%, 28%. So this is a high-level overview of the entire library budget. And in adult services and youth services, those dollar amounts also include the book budget. And so we, as you're going to see on the next page, we're trending a little bit behind on spending books and materials. But as tradition tells us, we always do get that spent.
Miracle.
The city's policy as far as carrying money forward has to do with if you were in the middle of a project or were planning to purchase something and you didn't get it purchased by June 30, then you could carry it forward. We probably will have salary savings, which just benefits the city by not spending that money as, you know, but as we hire replacement staff, then the spending will start on that. But as far as our maintenance and operations money, it gets spent. So I'm not concerned. And I think, you know, we'll see larger and thicker packets of invoices as the rest of the year goes on.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I was going to say that considering that we're just past the first quarter and about a quarter, we're about a quarter of that in terms of expenditures. So that's not too far back. So just to clarify that point in case anyone has a question. So what can be carried forward, can be asked for, the areas in program and materials, but not administrative salaries.
So salaries do not carry forward and our book budget would not carry forward.
Okay.
Either.
Yeah, I was, when I asked, it was strictly the invoices I was asking.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And we'll go to the next item, circulation.
One D, our monthly materials usage. And, you know, I looked at this and I, I have moments where I'm like, it bothers me that we're only open 10 to 5 Monday through Friday, that we're limiting the number of people that can come into the library. Then on another day, I'll feel like, but we're open, so this is good. So the exciting thing to me was that just between September and October, Civic Center Library saw a 37% increase in the checkouts. Mission Branch saw 75% increase. So people are realizing that we're open, they're appreciating it, and they are coming to the library and checking out books. Delivery, while we have seen it trend down just a little, it's still very high. And we're thankful that we're able to continue that. We've seen some increase in just overall circulation when you start looking at the e-resources and the e-learning and all of that. So 20%, 27% increase between September and October. So that is good. I was also working on some statistics for American Library Journal. And it asked for us to anticipate our overall circ for the year, knowing that, you know, libraries have been closed and COVID and all of that. And if we continue, you know, kind of trending in the direction that we are right now, will it, we will hit 100,000, or 300,000 by June 30, which is then a little bit more than what we ended last year with. And if we're able to open more hours, we will see that increase. So all things considered, it's not, it's not as tragic as I feel like it is some days. And then.
Just a minute.
Yes.
Paula has a question.
I have a question here. I'm looking at the customer service desk at the Mission Branch compared to the Civic Center. Are they lacking in self-checkout or are they calling up to have books delivered or? Because it's the same number as the deliveries. I just, that just caught my eye.
Yeah. Okay.
That was a good chat. Maybe the typo spurred.
I will double-check that with Jorge. That might be a typo.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good chat.
I will ask him to double-check that. And then otherwise, the only other thing I was going to mention, if, on the second page of that long list of things, you'll see that two months in a row, we have not had a door count at Civic Center Library. We had some software issues, but that's been resolved, so we should have good numbers then when we meet again for November. And that, that was all that I had planned to highlight unless you have other questions or comments.
So the computer use certainly bumped up as well.
Yes. They had a computer though downtown, didn't you?
Now, the negative phone calls in three or four weeks, they've all been very positive. Which is lovely.
Yeah. I was just looking back at that number, the 4332, and I did see on the, on page 1D, that was the items that was listed. So it'll be interesting to see if there's any change in that number. Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go over to the program statistics. One, excuse me?
On the program statistics, I just wanted to let you know, I'm a member now of the Graphic Novel Book Club. And, you know, I know nothing about graphic novels. And the other people in the group, you know, they're all middle-aged. There's no little people in there. They know the history of the illustrators, they know the history of the, you know, DC Comics. And so that's a lot of interesting stuff and comparing the graphic novels that we're reading and what they point out. And I'm glad to put in what other regular social history that I'm aware of that were happening during the time of the comics. Anyway, it is a fabulous group. I think I found a home.
Good.
Very good.
So the only thing that I was going to share was to just highlight again that all the programming is happening via Zoom. And we've not restored any in-person programming. So these numbers that you see reflect people that have participated in a Zoom program, so. And that's the end of my report.
Yeah. I was trying to, I didn't have a chance to go back to see how that was, that number with last month. I just was going to, I was just curious. Do you remember?
I don't. Not off the top of my head.
I was going to go back and look at that. Okay.
Question? Sherry? At our last meeting, Mr. Feller asked a question about the graphic novels, indicating that he was unfamiliar with that. And it sounds like, Paula, it's a new, new world for you. So I just don't know if, in terms of newsletters and the information that you give out, you don't need to be told what to do. But at the same time, I think it might be helpful for people to understand what graphic novels are because, you know, just maybe a paragraph or something, because I think a lot of people, as soon as they see that, they think of pornography or something. So I think.
I thought of comic books.
It might be informative.
Oh, yeah. I never thought of it so much as pornography as that they probably think it was kind of a bounce down or something, kind of for the younger people.
And it sounds like Paula's got some experts in her group.
Oh, they're fascinating. You know, and they're all, they always go to Comic-Con. They've been going ever since it opened. But just, you know, the book that we were, the graphic novel we were looking at was about Snagglepuss. However, Snagglepuss, the world he lived in, humans walked around as well. And Snagglepuss was a theater director and it was going. The book takes place during the House of Un-American Activities.
Wow.
Time that we were together. So, you know, I was able to paint a little because I remembered that. And recommend a movie, a good movie. But, and then the other one was kind of a, reminded me of Spy vs. Spy from a magazine, but it was much, much darker. And we talked about why foreigners during the time that the comic was published were painted in such evil accents and visual things. So, yeah, it's great. It's absolutely not what I expected, but I love it.
And my suggestion was just that, just a suggestion.
And I'll share that with Amy because I do know, I believe it's in January then, that they will become, well, I know they've become an official Comic-Con Book Club. And so it would be a good time to highlight graphic novels and
Yes.
the partnership with the Comic-Con. So I can suggest that she work with Chris to do something in one of the next e-newsletters, so.
Yeah, great, 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 great. Question to you, Paula.
Yes.
So do you, how many books do you read, like, in one month's time?
Well, there's, there's three suggestions, and I've gotten them all on Hoopla. They're always available on Hoopla in the graphic art form. And, you know, they're, they're not as long as a book. They're kind of like a really long short story. But, you know, it goes along with, you know, my interest in Korean and Chinese stuff because in graphic novels, Japanese, Korean, I'm not sure about Chinese, but anyway, there are a lot of graphic novels there that are translated. I went to the comic book store on Mission, that's also a coffee house. And it was really interesting. I liked it.
Yeah. Is there a teen group that does that? Do they do graphic book club teen? Do you know? I was just curious. I was thinking, I would think they might, you know, given the Comic-Con relationship.
I do believe that occasionally the teens do read a graphic novel, but this book club has always been geared towards adults.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. But I was just thinking it probably would be.
I have a granddaughter that recently got accepted to work on her master's and the subject is graphic novels.
Oh, neat.
And her grandfather almost had a snit because he didn't think that was a very serious subject for a master's thesis. So anyway, and I was saying, thank heaven she's still in school.
Well, it's actually part of the artificial intelligence era, so, you know, interesting.
I certainly didn't know it was a master's thesis subject matter, but it is.
Well, this is in Kentucky, of course.
Let's move on. Thank you. Thanks so much. So we'll go down to old business, approval of the draft strategic plan. Item three.
So just point of order, you skipped over public comment. I don't think we have any, but.
I did.
We should.
And I should acknowledge, but I just assumed.
We don't have any public.
Pardon my assumption. We have no public comments on the items on the agenda, and we have no public comments.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, item three. Sherry, do you want to say?
Three, approval of the draft strategic plan update 2021-2023. So based on the feedback that you provided to me at our October meeting, and CJ was in the audience, we went back and we did some work to incorporate those things, to try to connect the dots. I'm hoping that we have. This, it is in a format that we can, that we can work with. It's in no way complete as far as adding pictures and those kind of things. But it gets us a little closer in, in some regards with where, where we wanted to go. And I was hoping that having it a little bit more formalized would, would help with connecting those dots and things. So I'm looking for your feedback. I would be very happy if it's at a point where you can approve it today. If it's not, I understand that as well and will adjust accordingly.
I felt that it was much more legible and more usable. Not so formal that the staff was constricted. But I, I thought you've done a really good job. It's much better than it was.
I guess I need more help. So if you don't mind, Sherry, help me to connect the dots more easily from the four areas of engage, inform, connect, and inspire to the themes that we have. I'm looking at it, but it's not apparent to me. And so help me if you would.
Okay. I think as I mentioned last time, we understand our mission. And these are four, four themes that we feel based on the original work that took place in 2012, 2013 are kind of the outliers are left to work on. I think where you'll see maybe the dots connect a little bit better as, as we annually publish our action plan, then you will see in that where our mission bubble up to the top a little bit more. But I think where you're, where you might be struggling is that our last plan so much focused on that mission.
Yes.
And that was the right time to do that so that that mission would be so embedded in our, in our culture, in our, in our DNA, however you want to spin it. If you go back to the plan before that, which was the original plan that all of this is built on, that was a brand-new mission and vision statement. And we kind of had to grow, we had to grow into it. And so the last plan, so, like I said, it just, we use those words to get things accomplished.
Okay.
And so we're, we're there in our minds now and it's ingrained in us. And so now these last, these last four themes, they need, they need to happen and we bring the mission with us as we do that.
All right, so I'm, I think I'm hearing that it's kind of an evolution thing, that you're, you're moving from the four areas of engage, inform, connect, and inspire. And I totally support the new, the new themes. I like them. I was just, the last meeting, we were trying to overusing the term connect the dots. But how do you go from these four things to these themes over here?
Right.
So to some extent, you're, you're explaining it and you're also saying, Bill, you'll, you'll see it as it, as it comes to play.
Yes, I think, I think it will, it'll definitely, it'll definitely involve, evolve for you. Staff is great. As we've been writing, as we write grants, that, that mission is embedded in that grant. We don't, we look for grants that help us meet our mission. We look for grant partners that help us meet that mission. So we've, we've evolved that mission into our everyday. And so we will continue to do that as we work on these different themes. But these, these four themes and these goals really are what we have, what we have left to accomplish in this plan. And so we, you know, we need, we're feeling very dedicated to them, I think, is.
Thank you. If I could just ask one question about introduction, the first paragraph there, beginning with reflecting on the past seven years. The last sentence gave me a little bit of trouble, beginning with, with the confidence inspired. I was a math major. I wasn't an English major, so I defer to the English people around here. But when you get to focusing on four themes, comma.
Where is this?
Four goals yet to be accomplished. I, I struggle with that a little bit. So anyway.
I'm sorry.
Take a look at it.
Where is this? Could you?
End of the first paragraph, the, end of the first paragraph in the introduction.
Okay.
Focusing on four themes, comma, four goals yet to be accomplished. I think as I read it, I understand it, but grammatically, you know, maybe Sherry Noel can get it straightened out for you.
I don't have a problem with it.
Paula, are you an English background?
Yeah, I scored really high on my GRE in communication and language.
Okay, all right.
And I'm a common person. I don't speak. I don't get really hung up about business language.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of a policy geek, so I get into the objectives and the goals and the themes and all the rest of that stuff coming together. So thank you very much.
I think actually now, as I'm reading it, I I can kind of conceive what you mean. I'm just thinking there might be another word other than four. And it seemed to me it was more like.
Things of our goals yet to be.
Yeah, four themes.
Well, and I wasn't looking to wordsmith it right now, but just.
I know that, but I do.
Give it to the boss and let her figure it out.
I'm wondering if it's more like inspiring or relating to something. I think that word, just the four, could be.
Yeah.
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 More for an action, action.
We will work on the grammar of that.
To say about this, and I do appreciate your taking our comments considerably. I, what I found about this as I read through it again was having those four goals from the original plan, strategic plan, are kind of with me at every step. I almost felt as though the themes connected with every one of them.
Okay.
Didn't see that before. I think I was looking more like from the past where we were very specifically for each area. But when I saw this, so there are, these are big chunks still remaining. And, and they're very inspiring, I must say for myself. So I wish you all, I wish you the best of luck
Okay.
in terms of getting through them. So thank you.
I have a comment.
Sure.
I have a comment. Today is very, very different from 2012. The resources that have come together, most especially if you're looking at partnering with 211 San Diego. There's community partnerships available now to make a lot of really good stuff happen that wasn't in the beginning. And so the goals in the beginning were, were met. And there may be a few that are just awaiting completion. But to me, this big picture thing is, is good. We heard about last meeting, expanding community health and workforce development through Reed's Learning Center. There's, that's a big need in the community. And I'm excited about that. My only thing in three, theme two, can you please remind me what BIPOC is?
So that's black indigenous people.
Of color.
Of color.
I think it should be spelled out the first time you use it.
Okay, I thought that it was, and I'm seeing that it's not now.
Okay. Because that was my, I'm going, huh? And then I thought, well, maybe it's because I'm watching TV at the same time I'm reading this. But I didn't know what it was. Thank you, Paula.
I have one more comment on theme three, establish a library presence within existing city facilities. Now, the information board, the, or the information about what's going on in the library each month gets emailed out and I assume there's flyers in the library. But I was wondering if a, you know, stand, stand-up board could blow up what's happening at the library and be placed around city offices where a lot of people go. And I'm specifically thinking of where the people pay their utility bills and.
Parking tickets.
Planning department. If, if you had that there, it'd be another access for people that maybe do not access the library right now. And plus, it would inform the city employees. So anyway, that's just something to help establish a library presence.
Good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
I love this, Sherry. You know, it's, actually, I can see that a lot of work went into this. And the people that were on the team doing this, they're just so excellent. What a wonderful team that must have been to work on with this. But I like in theme four, that an evaluation component is going to be added to check out the effectiveness of the library programs. So anyway, that's enough for me.
And I'll just add one thing to that. What really came forward to me this.
Would you speak more?
What really came.
Again, your.
Hello, hello, hello? What really came out for me this time too, second time around, is these four, these areas, you're really delving deeply. You really are. That's why I said I wish you luck because you've got some, you've got some deep things. That's why I said I wish you luck, because you've got some, you've got some deep things here to accomplish.
Yeah, yes, we do.
I feel that it really helps, like the foundation trying to get people to donate. This is so clear. It gives us a tool for outreach that, that has good clarity.
Good point.
So recommendation to the board to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved and second to approve. Any more questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moved second and approved. Item four, new business.
So you're going, we had to do, we had to read them too. So I'm bringing, so I'm bringing to you the customer conduct and staff policy. Now, if you're someone that follows the, the outline that I provided, what is missing is the collection policy. I did not bring that forward to you as scheduled, because as we are looking at the strategic plan, some of those things are going to be with, as far as the collection, are going to be addressed there. And so we wanted more time to work on the collection policy. And so we will bring that back to you at a later date. So what you have now, like I said, is customer conduct and staffing policy. And I will do my best to answer questions if you have questions or concerns. So let's start with customer conduct.
No comment. Looks good.
I, I don't know whether mine is more of an overall comment, but I just found myself getting a little lost between starting off with like 1.1, and then I found that in 1.1, the area 1.1 was 2. something. I, I got a little lost. So I think I'm just going to try and go with where we are on the pages.
Yeah, it's hard, as I mentioned at the beginning there, just don't get tripped up on the spacing and the numbering, because as we pull these things out for you to work on them in sections.
Yeah.
The numbering just gets crazy.
So the only thing I was just seeing, I guess on the second page, again, there are page numbers, yeah, on the second page, I think what is being said on under 2.2, but it's 0.5, library staff may restrict adult use of, I think that should be children's, it's looking like it's intended to be put in and then struck out. Children's, are you saying, you wouldn't say use of child or teens?
Yes. So the language was changed to try to say, library staff may restrict adult use of the child or teens area.
So you're missing the the.
Yeah, it's either the child, or it should just be children's. That's why I'm saying if you were trying to take children's.
I agree.
You have teens with an S, why wouldn't you use children, plural?
Library staff may restrict adult use.
So I'm not an English major, and when my staff that is goes off the deep end, I don't go with them.
Well, you tell them the library board didn't either.
Yeah, so library staff may restrict, I just want to know, is it restrict adult use of children's or teens areas or the child's, which doesn't make sense to me, or teens areas?
So it would be the adult use of the child or teen areas.
Okay, so that just needs to be clarified.
It's got to be one way or the other. You've got them half and half.
So is it the areas that really work, yeah?
Yeah, there was a.
Is it the areas or is it the children and the teens?
Teens area one time.
Okay? Just a little clarification there.
Sherry, I hope you realize you have so much help from your library board, you know, getting into the weeds here.
I know.
Well, she, listen, when they give you the weeds, you've got to deal with the weeds.
I know, I understand, I understand.
If you want to.
Ask and you shall receive.
I would much rather just bring some mulch and just.
Throw it over the top and don't worry about it.
Or we could just move to approve.
Okay, so then there's the same thing on page three, that's fine, the numbers, da, da, da.
I don't think I made any.
I don't think I had any, I don't think I had any questions. I found that there was a comma needed, and I felt, really? Oh, my gosh. Do you really want to bring that up?
Well, sometimes that's, you know, people don't, they read it so much, they don't see it. So my only comment in the whole thing was unattended children, that two staff members should stay with an unintended child. And I remember one time being in the library, and there were two boys playing chase in the library. And it was, the first thing was to try and define the parent that belonged to them, to say, we don't run in the library. Okay. That was a total aside.
I am going to.
No.
No.
My question is, how often are unattended children after the library closes? Are they around? I mean, how often does it happen?
I can't remember the last time it happened.
Not very often.
It was really bad, but it was years ago.
Yeah, there was a time when it, it happened quite frequently. Therefore, that's why the policy.
So like the library was a quasi care, babysitting area, yeah.
Yeah. You know, and that, it could have even been back in the day when we were open till like nine o'clock at night, and you know, that type of thing.
I can see that. Well, they're probably at a bar downtown, right?
All of them should have been in bed already.
Okay, are there any other areas?
No.
I have one.
Yes, Paula.
On the contacting adult protective services.
Can you give me a page number, little small number there near the bottom?
Page 16, under the staff.
Holy smoly. This just happened.
2.6, or 2.6C. It says in here, the staff member cannot be held liable for making a report. The only way that they can be held liable is if it goes, if the person sues in a civil court, and then your anonymity is released, and you may be called to testify. And the failure to make a report, I know in, that's something that I really stress when I'm talking about APS and abuse, is failing to make a report is just as serious. You get fined for that. Now, of course, that is then a.
Fired.
A group home with other staff close by that are doing, you know, dealing with individuals with developmental disabilities. But I would assume that, you know, a lot of people don't make a report when they see it, they just depend on someone else doing it. If it means that they, you know, they suspect something, they should be encouraged if they don't want to contact APS, that they let someone else know on what they observed, and they can write the report.
So what are you suggesting should be altered here? Is it point three in terms of nor failure to make a report?
Yes, number three.
Yeah.
We, so as library staff, if I'm remembering correctly, we are not mandated reporters.
Oh, okay, all right.
But we do feel a moral obligation if we see something.
Absolutely.
And so staff has, there, specifically the children's staff has had some training, and they do know how to make that phone call if they need to, or to be, or to call the police. So.
Good, okay.
We, you know, we don't want to ever be in a situation where staff is concerned that, you know, they could get in trouble for doing something. And we, you know, we have had a situation where staff did the right thing, the parent found out that we were the ones that called, and it, you know, it caused some strife, but we got through it.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, the protection of the child is more important than any personal feeling bad about the situation can bring to you, so.
The other thing that I tell my students is that APS doesn't just come in and yank kids out of the home. And they're there to, with lots of resources to help a parent who is struggling, maybe the father lost the job, or the mother lost her job. And neglect is an area where, that's, that's an area, there can be lots of reasons why neglect is happening, other than I'm strung out on crack and I don't care anymore. It's more the case of resources are needed, they need to be put in context.
So understanding there are no change here that you're proposing?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, hearing, hearing none. Recommendation to the board to approve.
So moved, second.
Moved and second? Williamson and Hakes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, item number five.
Wait, can I just throw one more thing in? I'm sorry, I highlighted, but are there payphones outside the library?
Yes, there are.
Where?
There's one down towards Civic Center, or excuse me, towards Coast Highway.
I've seen it.
Okay.
By the bicycle racks.
Oh, okay.
Payphones.
I didn't know they still existed.
Okay, so we did not discuss section six on staffing, was there anything in that one?
No, I, I asked if there were any other questions.
Okay, all right.
What were you worried about?
Is there something that you wanted to pull up?
I, I just wasn't sure if you were taking them.
Oh, no, I said, is there any, are there any other?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so we have approved these to go forward. Item number five on the agenda.
So attached is the proposed meeting schedule for the library board for 2021. We would continue to meet on Tuesdays and meet here in the council chambers. And then if something changes, where we're able to move back to the library boardroom and move back to Monday, we can make that decision at any meeting that we want to. But just for the sake of calendaring and things like that, we have reserved this day and time for the entire year, and I have reserved this day and time with KOCT through the month of May.
Great, I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So you need a motion to approve this?
Move for approval.
Hakes?
Yes, sir.
Second? By who? Loftus, who?
Paula, Paula seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If we are meeting.
Oh, you over there. Any, yes, what do you, have a question?
So if, if we're meeting on a Tuesday for the board meeting, one of us apparently is going to be gone to a Friends meeting. Is that, am I reading this correctly?
No.
Different date.
Of the month, dear.
It's the what?
So the different week of the month.
It's a different week of the month.
There are four Tuesdays in a month, so it's a different time, right?
The library boards will be meeting the fourth. Month, and the Friends meet the second Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
She still didn't get it. I said there are four Tuesdays in a month.
The literacy is not meeting at all.
That's your next item, and I'll.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it has been moved and second. All in favor of the schedule?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And item six, consideration of, oh, that was it, thank you.
That's what I was asking, there's no literacy.
So consideration of the Friends meetings and the Reed's meetings. So we would like to get the rotation restarted so that you can join the Friends meetings via Zoom. At this time, literacy, she is not planning in literacy the type of meetings that you had attended in the past. She's moved to a different kind of format.
Okay.
So my question to you then would be, how would you like to be updated on what is going on in literacy? And I think that there might be things from time to time where she's doing a meeting or a program where she would just include you all as a group in the invitation. But it, but she is changing things from the way that it had been done in the past.
So do you have any idea of what the format will be in terms of understanding the shift?
I'm not, I'm not quite sure what, what her plan is. I think she's, I think she's moved away from the, you know, the lunch idea, and she's being, she has, she is doing much more focused training with the tutors when they get together on a, on a certain subject.
Yeah, she is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that's the direction that she.
Find out if she's like, if there are certain times that she would be inviting us to step, to, to view or to be observers or something like that.
I have a suggestion.
Yes?
If, if every, every three months, she can either come to us and report, or invite us to a function at the literacy. So when she's doing some parties, that might be the thing to do for that month in like May or something, she does something in the spring and graduation.
Yeah, I don't want to go with no, no meeting or nothing, that.
I think that would be.
Important we keep in touch with literacy.
Does everyone feel comfortable with that, maybe asking that she could come and make a report?
I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I think that getting one of these, there's a lot of information on this, and basically that's what you would be reporting, I suppose.
Well, she didn't say that, but if that's what you're suggesting, if she could provide one of these every time she, what, every month, or?
It is, it's November 2020 update.
Yes, I know, but I don't know if she's doing this every month. I have no idea if, I wouldn't think she would.
I can ask her to do whatever is your pleasure, because the other piece of this is that there is not, you know, in the, in the past, there was someone on the Friends board that was a liaison to Reed's and back and forth, and that's not been happening.
Right.
And then you're not attending, you know, Reed's meetings right now either. So moving forward, I can talk to her, I can give Chelsea and Monica the feedback that you still want to be informed, you still want to be involved. What is something that, you know, what is a new creative way to do that?
Yes.
That's why I asked for then, your next item there, 7A, those two sheets, I asked for those sheets because I realized it had been a while since you had any kind of update or information on Reed's. So we can look at some creative ways to keep you informed. And I like the idea of the quarterly update, I like the idea of, you know, you being invited when she's doing certain things, and if you have the availability to attend, that you can. So let, I can go back to her with some of that.
Certainly, because monthly, these numbers are not going to change that much in terms of some of the areas by month, so I wouldn't want her going through that. I think that, that's a great idea, we want to let her know that we're still, you know, of course, very interested.
Yes, I think.
And for example, like her December 15th meeting coming up, that we just got the flyer for.
Yes, and I think all of you as a board got invited to that, did you not?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so that, that's great.
I think Charlene has a question, Alma.
I do, I thought we said it was no longer called literacy. You don't understand.
Learning. It's the Ocean Side Reed's Learning Center. You said not literacy, Learning Center.
And everything.
It's Learning Center, it's not literacy.
That's, that's.
It says, but, but these say Learning Center.
What I'm asking is, what is correct?
Learning.
It is the Learning Center.
Learning Center, as stated on these flyers.
Okay.
Okay, so it just takes a little time to make the transition.
So is there something in December that we should know about?
We all sent something.
On December 15th, what were you talking about?
It was like a fall thing that, didn't I see that? It was a flyer, I think Sherry sent. It was a flyer, I think Sherri sent it out.
Yes, what was that? Do you remember?
December 15th, I think.
Was it, is it December or was it January? I mean, or was it November? Did it happen or is it happening?
December 15th.
December 15th, okay.
That's what I put on my calendar.
What? I meant, I can't hear you.
There is a, there is a Reeds Learning Center event on December 15th, and I believe that you, as a Library Board, were invited to participate in that.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I missed it, so I don't have it. What time is it?
I, I, I don't remember right now. Maybe four, three or four.
And resend it to you.
Thank you.
Would you resend to Charlene?
12:30, is it?
Thank you. I appreciate somebody being awake.
Okay.
I just want to comment. The information on these two printouts is more information than I've ever learned about the Learning Center. Even, even though the Board or the Friends had a representative that would come back and report, their reports basically were how many learning parents there were. Not much information after that. So if this came out quarterly, I think it would be awesome. It does give a really good overview of all the different areas they're in. The Family Literacy Series, the Families with 58 involved in Family Literacy, oh, okay. 58 families involved in family history throughout 19 and 20, 2020. Thirty-nine of 50 learners active during COVID, staff, tutor, or independently.
Yes, it is very, yeah, it's great.
I've always do, I've always do going to those things as more of a, does the Library Board know who I am and do they love me? And it was more for them than anything about me. I'm expected to know.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the feedback on that, and I'll work with Chelsea on that. And then the other piece would be for you to look on your calendars and make sure that you can participate in the Friends meetings as you've been assigned. And there was no action needed on that, but I do appreciate the, the feedback and, and the need, your desire to stay connected with.
And I, knowing her, I'm sure she'll be delighted to.
Yes, yes.
What is Coursera?
Coursera is that learning software that I talked about last month.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And you were going to get more information on that.
Is that the one with training?
Yeah.
If the, if it's transferable to regular college, isn't it?
Yeah, it is not.
Yeah, okay. It is not transferable?
Yeah, I'll give you guys an update when we get to my director's report.
Thank you. All right. It's nothing further than I think that we need to discuss between item six and nine, item seven. Anything, 7A, I should say. All right. With 7B? Friends of the Library?
So the Friends of the Library, the report would be that they met again on November 10th via Zoom. They're, they had good functionality, so they're, they're doing fine. It was announced that the President, Chris Wilson, asked for a leave of absence, and he was granted two months, and Mona will be acting president for the next two months while he is on the leave of absence. We reviewed the September and October financial reports, and of course, their revenues are down, and so they have cashed in one of their CDs in order to meet their pledge to the library for the books and materials budget. And they formed a committee to prepare next year's budget, and I'm anticipating what I'm going to, what I'm going to present to them is a lesser budget than what I've had in the past. I can't in good conscience ask that, you know, I can see the numbers. So.
Are they on a calendar year?
They're on a calendar year, yes. So they continue to look for a new book sorting storage facility. They've put a little committee together to look for that. They do need to be in their new location by July of 2021, so.
Oh, I thought it was before. That's good.
It was, it was, we thought, we thought March or April, but it's been extended a little, so that's good. I think, as I've shared at previous meetings, they've got some very creative fundraising ideas going on, and their T campaign brought in over $7,000, so they were very excited with those results. And then they launched a GoFundMe page on November 15th or 16th. So if you are on Facebook and you are a friend of the Friends of the Ocean Side Public Library, go to their page, find that GoFundMe posting and share it, because then that goes out to all of your friends and gives people an opportunity to make a donation. And then they made the decision, just because of so many months of not meeting and just things that are pressing, that they will have a meeting in December this year. So they will go ahead and have their December meeting on, I believe it's the 10th or the, the 8th of December.
But we're not scheduled.
You're not scheduled to start until January. So that's the Friends report.
December 8th.
December 8th.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But, but the regular, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get clarity. The Sherri will send us the Zoom connection for our, our assigned meetings. Great, thank you. That's what I was asking.
Well, okay, so we can use these, though, what we have, and schedule our times, right?
Correct.
Yeah, it's confirmed. Okay. All right. Next. Foundation? No report.
No report.
Sarah, thank you. Sarah Cooperative? Nothing further?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Eight, your library director's report.
Okay, so I'll start by just saying, as far as COVID is concerned, the city has moved, or the county has moved back into the purple tier. There's nothing in the order that says anything about libraries needing to close, so we remain open 10 to 5, Monday through Friday. The branch on some days does get to capacity, which is 15 for them, and they do often have a small queue for the computers. Civic Center here, we have not hit the 30, and we've hit more than, you know, we've had to queue a couple of times for the computers, but not often. We're well below the 25% capacity that retail is using, so we are not in, in any way violating any of that. So we will just carry on as, at this, at this stage until further notice.
We're still getting the numbers, though, even though we're not proud of it at this point.
Yes, there's still checkouts, there's still, you know.
Constant.
Yes, yes. People are still coming in, checking out books and things like that.
Great.
I was trying to remember in terms of the different stages. I mean, if, I'm just saying, if we should reach, say, the 30 or whatever, really, is there any reason we couldn't increase the number and still, under these current restrictions?
Yeah.
There is?
We would be able, if, if we were like hitting 30 on a regular basis, we feel Mission Branch probably can't sustain much more than the 15 or so.
But here.
Just, but Civic Center, we could increase that if, if we needed to.
Okay, all right.
If you could be sure the right ones were upstairs and down.
Right, the right number of people upstairs, the right people, you know, downstairs.
And one in the elevator.
Yes.
Just kidding.
Two on the stairs.
As was mentioned already, you had some follow-up questions about the learning platform Coursera, and we did have an opportunity to meet with the vendor, as you instructed. It was, it was a great conversation. We, it's, it's a, it's spendy, and so we will be meeting as a staff on Monday to talk about if we feel like we could afford to continue to have this. So the Coursera courses, as people finish them, do not count for college credit, but there are some courses that are actually recognized as, they're certified certificates in a, in a certain field. And depending on if, you know, say you were an adult learner that had gone back to school in an adult continuation learning environment, some of those courses, they could look at that and say, okay, well, you have this life experience and you've got this training, you know, and if they take up to maybe 12, you know, give you 12 credits for something like that, there's a few things there that could possibly qualify. But the, the bulk of their emphasis is on work, you know, work development and helping people update their resumes, and the certifications definitely can be added to a resume, and several of them are backed by different universities. So while it's not college credit, it is not a waste of your, of someone's time and effort to participate in it. So that, that's what I learned from that, and then we'll be, like I said, we'll be talking about whether we feel like we can afford to, to add it.
When you say it's kind of spendy, can, just, can you give me a kind of some range of depending on what this?
So they, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, for what they had presented to us, which I think was 125 seats, it was around $50,000. Yeah.
Sherri, wouldn't, but if you did end up getting this resource, doesn't that tie in with objectives that you have for workforce training and preparedness for college or whatever? I think that, not knowing too much about it, but it definitely seems to apply to some of the goals you've set out in the strategic plan.
Oh, it's definitely a benefit, both strategic plan-wise and what Reeds is, is trying to do. There's no doubt there. It's, it's about the, the funding, and we did ask them, and without revealing dollar amounts, we came back to them with another, you know, a lesser amount for them to consider. And so Monica's been kind of in negotiation with them, and that's what we're going to talk about on Monday to see, you know, and is it, do we, do we get, do we stop something else that we have that maybe isn't being used as heavily to be able to, you know, bring something like this on, so.
Well, then maybe something else that will be, you know, some, a competitive force coming along. I wouldn't be surprised eventually, given where we are now with our new normals.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So those are those updates. Then I just wanted to let you know, with the Story Corner refresh and our Hub project, so the design work continues on that, and like anything that we do, once we touch one thing.
The thing else goes.
Adrienne's laughing, but she knows.
I know, too, after this, two weeks.
We start looking at touching other things. And so this has really evolved into something that I think when it's, when it's all said and done, is going to be really good. And so a couple of the things that we have settled on and are continuing to, to work on, but I wanted to bring you guys into the loop sooner rather than later, is that the plan right now is that we would be moving the large print back upstairs and the AV upstairs and the area that.
Excuse me, but will large print just be inter, combined with the regular or still be separate?
It'll still be separate.
Good, okay.
So we would be moving those upstairs. That area then, that it vacates there on the first floor, becomes the hub, the early learning hub, and gives us an opportunity for a lot of flexibility with different classes and providing service to the community. We would be weeding the collection and specifically oversized that just sits there and doesn't circulate well, and also then low circling fiction and nonfiction, and we would be moving, and this is one of the reasons why I wanted to weight on the collection policy, we would be moving towards a more popular collection than having like, well, this is, you know, this was a good book and we really need to save it even though it hasn't checked out in 10 years and it's dusty type of thing. So we would be moving to a more popular reading collection, both in fiction and nonfiction. And then we would be doing a genification of the collection, which means we would be moving to more of a bookstore model, where right now in Dewey, all the cookbooks are together, but self-help can be kind of in three different Dewey classifications, and they would be, all be being brought together. And other, other things like, well, biographies are all together. So in some ways, it's not a radical change, but in other parts of the collection, it would be. And so we're, we're moving to doing more like that. It may possibly include like, all the mysteries would be together.
Oh, yay!
Which would make people happy. Now, this is not going to.
And the westerns in another spot.
Yes. This is not going to happen overnight. This is probably, when it's all said and done, a, a two-year project. But if we're going to be shifting to move AV and to move large print upstairs, and we're going to be touching all the books, then we might as well touch them and move them where we want them to be. So there's other libraries that have, have done this. We, this is not a new conversation. We have had it before, but we've not gotten serious about it as we are right now. So I wanted to just let you know that this is a direction, but several of the libraries in the San Diego Public Library system have moved to this kind of arrangement of materials, and then some libraries out of state in Colorado and other places are doing it as well.
Has it increased, has it increased circulation?
That's a good question, and I can ask that. I think what it has done is it has helped people that just, you know, they walk in to the library with no understanding of Dewey, but they know they want a cookbook, so they, so it's going to involve signage. It's going to involve really making sure that we have good subject tags in the catalog, which a lot of that we've already done. So it's not going to be a lot of work to the catalog, but it, it's going to be.
Promises, promises, promises.
It's train, it's a lot of training for the, for the staff and for them to understand. But, so that, that is a direction that we are, that we are moving.
I'd like to volunteer, if you're taking volunteers, to help with that.
Okay.
I can't think of anything more lovely than to reorganize books.
According to genrefication.
Yes, yes.
Genre.
Okay. So then the other project, of course, that. Okay. So then the other project, of course, that is front and center right now is the Creé work. And they continue to meet every week. We're getting ready for our second round of book clubs with staff that had not participated the first time around. And then they're preparing a staff survey. And part of that survey is going to ask the staff the question about how they identify racially. And so we will get to that information. But also just, it will inform a little bit in a, in a way where staff feels free to, you know, answer questions that, in an anonymous way, about how, what, how they feel about race in general and, and some things specifically. And so then that will help that team know what, where we need to go with some training and things like that. So they continue to, like I said, meet every week. They have submitted a grant to the State Library to help with some of the work that they, that they want to do. And then the final project that I wanted to just let you know is that we, we are moving forward with the project with the courtyard. We have received some proposals, we're reviewing those. And then we will be selecting a consultant. And I will update you on with that selection at your January meeting. So.
We have to know where the frog's going.
Yes, we do.
So I know, I, it's exciting. I don't know if there's been any discussion about any conceptual ideas for it, but it's just exciting. I think some people will get done with it.
For the courtyard?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. In 2016, we had applied for a grant that we didn't get. But there was some community input for that. And so we had saved all of that information. And so we have that, that we can include as we, as we meet with the, the architect.
Yeah, great, good, good.
The last time we tried to do anything, as I recall, we were told that we couldn't because all the heating and water and stuff was all under the patio.
Yeah, there, there are two manhole covers there or maintenance covers there that we do need to be able to let city staff access. But, you know, kind of understanding that, I think that things can still be worked around to still make those accessible, but do some things to that, to that courtyard. So.
Well, in the past, twice, we've tried to do something with the patio.
And part of it was, there wasn't money either. And we do actually have money.
With a flower pot over them.
So. And then the only other thing I was gonna just let you know, as far as on the staffing and staff development page there, item 8D, that they did, the city council did approve the librarian, one in adult services, moving from 25 hours to 40. They did that.
Oh, yay!
So we will start that recruitment as soon as we can. That we have screened some applications for the library aide and the office assistant. The technical assistant will get screened next week. And they interviewed for library assistant today. So we are working through those, those vacancies.
Great.
And I have nothing else to report or add unless you have a question for me.
I don't have a question.
I'm just missing the public comments page.
There wasn't any, so.
Yeah.
But it's so much fun.
Well, you'll have to write one till we have one next time.
There you go.
I just wanted to say that under new staff, I'm so delighted to see that of the teens, two of those young ladies have been working with our North County African-American.
Oh, that's good.
Oh, becoming a global citizen. So we have really branched in terms of the multicultural, cross-cultural involvement.
Both Dulcie and.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, very exciting to see that.
Well, I'll tell you, all six of them are so squared away.
I bet.
It's, it's, it's delightful.
Yeah.
It's delightful to, to have them.
And we have, I think, two others that have applied, hoping they'll get into the next group, so.
Okay.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah. Okay. And we are, anything more in public relations or staff training? Good to see the staff training still going on. It's wonderful. Board member comments?
I wondered, we had talked about the, the new reading center. How's it going? How's it?
So they're.
I mean, physically, the new.
Right.
The location.
They're getting, they are getting settled into their space. And I believe they may be able to do some limited in-person things in, in January. And I will, maybe if we have agenda light at our January meeting, we could walk over there and, and get a tour after that. So.
I was wondering how, how, if, we've talked about concepts and everything else, but we haven't talked about, do they fit in the space?
Oh, yes, they fit nicely in the space.
And is it working?
Will we be able, will we be able to see it in December when we go to the event there?
I think that event is on Zoom.
That's a Zoom event.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah. But they've already said that.
Minor detail.
That it has given them some additional value in terms of being able to have some separate areas before where they were always open. So, yeah. Looking forward to that.
Well, it was sort of a big move, that's why I wondered.
Okay, anything else?
I have an announcement.
All right.
I have another great grandson.
Uh-huh. Well, congrats.
Score is now four great-grandsons, one great-granddaughter.
And she's saying that because she just beat me with, by one.
Well, I'm getting ready to step into that pool.
Good.
In February.
All right.
I'll have my first great-granddaughter.
You're gonna join her.
And she's in Italy. How about that? So might get a chance to travel.
Does it shortly?
Maybe.
Yeah. This one's in Utah, and I don't think I'll see him until he's walking.
Yeah, might get to Italy.
I got one coming in March.
All right. Anything else?
But Adrienne's this morning.
Bill, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment Sherry on the, the COVID stuff because it's such a moving target. You know, purple tier, orange tier, red tier, how many people, I mean, it's, you know, in addition to your regular responsibilities, keeping track of all that, I think is quite a challenge.
Absolutely.
And my compliments to you and the staff for being able to figure it all out.
Thank you.
I told, I've told several people, and actually I've had some conversation with the staff, too, about their ability to pivot so, so well and so quickly, to possibly be a resource to us. So we'll continue those discussions and see where it might lead. We might be able to.
Alma, I like your word pivot. It reminds me of the movie where, where the lady was, had a demon inside of herself and her head was spinning around.
Oh, yes, I remember that.
The insurance.
In terms of the pivot, I'm thinking Sherry sometimes feels like her head is just spinning as well.
I understand. I wish you had a different image, but I, because I remember that.
That was the requirement to be a director.
Maybe so.
Wow.
I always liken things to being a plate spinner.
Okay, okay.
Start all these plates spinning, and by the time I get this one over here, this one's starting to do this, and I gotta go back.
That's the whirling dervish.
Yes.
The whirling dervish, yes.
You should have a hula hoop in there.
There you are.
Work, my work, I feel like my work is never done. I just keep going back.
Keep on whirling, keep on whirling.
Alma, I'll choose better in the future, Mike.
Yeah, we'll work on that, that's fine. But certainly, you certainly, the image did get the message across. So. All right. Hearing another, happy Thanksgiving to you all.
And to you.
Thank you.
And I hope that you all stay safe. I'm not cooking a thing. I ordered a turkey the first time from Fraser Farms, the whole dinner.
Good for you.
I have to tell you.
I may fix something, one thing.
I have, I have to tell you a joke.
A joke.
I have nothing to wear to the living room for my Thanksgiving dinner, so I probably won't go.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I'm by myself.
What? Oh, bal the dash.
Well, we had the first of our Thanksgiving dinners, a luncheon Sunday for 14. And it was really so neat because we had all these babies nobody had seen before. Cause.
Wow. Well, we have usually 13 to 15, and, and some of them have to stay over. So that's like an upstairs dormitory. And we just said, mm, I don't think so.
Well, this is the first time we've done it in years.
Wow.
And then we got regular Thanksgiving on Thursday.
Yeah, coming. Well.
It was so neat, all these babies. Geez.
Good luck to all.
Thank you.
And thank you again, Sherry, for, and conveyed that to the staff, all of you. Wonderful. All right.